Number of members present to permit us to open the meeting and I so do declare. Welcome to all, to our town meeting members. Welcome back for night three of our fall town meeting. I also want to welcome our members of our town staff, members of our boards and committees, town consultants and article presenters, as well as residents and other visitors who have all joined us tonight. Welcome one and all. I'm Heather Von Mary. I am the town meeting moderator. I am joined at Wind Cam with our town clerk, Ms. Mary Ellen Lannon, who is seated in the room with me. Also with me and off camera is staff from the town clerk's office, IT director, Mr. Matthew Griffin, town council, Mr. Mina Macarius of Anderson and Krieger, our deputy moderator, Sam Allison, and Wind Cam staff. As a reminder to town meeting members, if you have issues throughout this evening, there are multiple points of ways that you can ask for help. There are two phone numbers. I'm going to be giving those to you now. The first phone number is seven eight one, seven two one, seven one, three zero. And the second number is seven eight one, seven two one, two zero, five zero. At this time, I'm going to ask the voter to scroll through and show you if all those who are present. If you are arriving late, have no fear. Your votes still count. You turn your attention to V voter, town meeting members. You will be seeing everyone who marked themselves as present at the time that that call was made. As a reminder on your V voter screen in the bottom right,
Recording in progress.
You have the speak button and on that speak button is ways that you can get my attention. By telling me that you would like to speak on a motion, you have a point of order, which is due to parliamentary procedures. You want to make a motion, second emotion, move the vote and cancel my request, which is canceling you out. If you click something twice, you get taken out of queue. So please mark it once. If you want to make sure that you're still in queue, you can always Q and A to the deputy moderator to confirm and she will let you know at that time if you're still in queue. As a reminder to those who use raise of hand, we are not able to communicate with you. So we are not able to know what you're trying to get our attention for. So please use the Q and A function of Zoom and not the raise of hand. Before we move into the order of business tonight, starting with Article 10, I would like to remind town meeting members that we will not be meeting on Thursday. An observation of Veterans Day. The Veterans Day parade will step off at 10:30 at the Jank Center. We'll then go to Mount Vernon, around the Rotary, up Church, down Waterfield, stop at the World War One Memorial where there will be a re ceremony. They'll reassemble and walk down Main Street to Mount Vernon and then the Veterans Memorial at Town Hall with the ceremony. World War One, known at the time as the Great War officially ended when the Treaty of Versailles was signed on June 28, 1919. However, fighting ceased seven months earlier with an armistice or temporary cessation of hostilities between the Allied nations and Germany when to effect in 11th hour of 11th day of 11th month. For that reason, November 11, 1918 is generally regarded as the end of the war to end all wars. An act approved May 13, 1938, made the 11th of November in each year a legal holiday, primarily set aside to honor veterans of World War One. But in 1954, after World War Two had required the greatest mobilization of soldiers, sailors, Marines and airmen in the nation's history, Act of 1938 was amended by striking and inserting in its place the word veterans. With approval of this legislation on June 1, 1954, November 11 became a day to honor American veterans of all wars. In honor of Veterans Day and every day that we get to pursue our life, liberties and happiness, on behalf of all of town meeting, we send our gratitude to all the Winchester veterans. There are approximately 550 among us who have served our nation. Thank you so much for your service. In that respect, I ask those who would like to join me to please rise for the pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Moving to page 25 of your Town of Winchester, Winchester, 2021 Fall Annual Town Meeting Motion booklet with the blue cover. It is moved and seconded that the capital planning committee report for fiscal year 2023 be received and filed. Seeing that there are no questions, a vote of the majority is required. The question will be on your screen and it is printed as in your motion book, like I said, on page 25. Please turn your attention to the voter and select if you are in favor and no if you are not. Town meeting members, 30 seconds have started. This is just to accept capital plannings taken and file. Usually with the reports, we take the vote prior to having them speak. There are 136 in affirmative and zero in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is adopted. And in response to that, further on the, further on it will be the Chair of Capital Planning, Mr. Jimmy Johnson. Thank you. Before we begin, actually, I'm going to just tell town meeting members how we're going to work through 14, since there's a bunch of motions associated with that. I'm sorry, through, oh, through 12. We'll get back to that. Go ahead. I'm jumping ahead. I'm super excited for Article 11. All right. Sorry, Mr. Johnson.
Ms. Moderator, Select Board, School Committee, Finance Committee, Town Staff and Town Meeting Members. On behalf of the Capital Planning Committee, welcome. We have submitted our FY '23 capital report for your consideration and hopefully your positive vote. FY '22 was a very good year for capital in our town. With the support of the voters, town meeting members, the Select Board, School Committee, Finance Committee and Town Staff, we thank you for identifying a funding source for the improvements at the Morocco School and the COVID at Morocco, along with the many other capital projects that were approved in FY '22. The quality of life for the citizens of Winchester have been greatly improved due to your support and your actions. As you look over the FY '23 but capital budget, you will notice many requests. Few have been funded in this fall town meeting. If we look at the capital stabilization fund, we were requesting funding for a new fire truck, pumper number three, Washington Street and Cross Street Bridge work, engineering and permitting, a townwide traffic master plan, a new ambulance for the fire department and a DPW management building, management vehicle. The value of this request is $1,100,000. From the Building Stabilization Fund, we will be requesting funding for the Central Fire Station HVAC, which is for engineering and construction. Town Hall HVAC engineering, McCall facade, construction documents, the West Side Fire Station improvements, engineering and construction, a DPW storage garage, design and engineering, the Lincoln School chilla schematic design and specifications, the Lincoln School site work design, the McCall control conversions, phase one. This is a total request from the Building Stabilization Fund of $1,380,000. From the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, we will be asking for a borrowing authorization for the South Reservoir Dam for engineering services in the amount of $72,000. The Capital Planning Committee does support and did co-sponsor the Selectman's Article for the renovations of the transfer station. On behalf of the Capital Planning Committee, I would like to thank everybody involved in the FY '23 capital process and hopefully your yes vote on all our capital requests.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, for your report that will be on file and available on the town's website. Moving on, Article 11 was part of the consent agenda and now we are moving on to Article 12. This is what I was so excited to tell you about. So there are 14 motions as part of Article 12. How I plan to do this is, is my understanding that the Capital Planning Committee, which is a sponsor of the 14 motions, will be providing you their overview in one swoop. Thereafter, I will be asking boards and committees to provide you their recommendations on the 14 different motions and then we will go and open each motion for debate individually and vote each individually. I felt this would be the most effective way to move through this article. So starting with Article 12, I'm going to open it by moving in second that the town vote to appropriate 750,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for the main fire station HVAC system, including construction, engineering and all other costs and stuff and related thereto. At this time, Mr. Johnson, he's not here to confuse you, but he will be talking about all 14 of them, but we'll be going through them individually as a meeting. Further, the proponent, Mr. Jimmy Johnson, Chair of Capital Planning.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Johnson. We can hear you.
Yes, okay. I thought you were going to run the tape. We did.
We're going to do it right now.
I can do that. Thank you. This is for the fall town meeting for the main fire department HVAC system. As you want to know, that's an older system. We've had many problems with it and we're looking to immediately address that. The first step we did originally was to hire an engineering firm and perform an evaluation of the existing conditions and develop a plan to go forward. During our engineering phase was determined that it needed to be replaced, plain and simple. The current system is old, problematic and it's been a constant source of maintenance irritation for the firefighter and public and police department for many years. The public safety billing, i.e. the fire department, is really not actively cooled or heated, leading to unacceptable living conditions for our public safety servants. This appropriation will fund the installation of a new HVAC system at the Main Street Fire Station, Main Fire Station on Mount Vernon Street. Would you like me to go to the next one?
Yes, please. We do have your video, but you're doing great if you'd like to continue.
Town Hall HVAC. There was a request, as you know, to do a lot of work downtown hall last year or last spring. What we want to do is we want to complete plans and specification for improvement and replacement of the current HVAC system at the Town Hall. Last fall, like I said, we did some work there. The current system is very old and has had, then again, many difficulties creating uncomfortable working conditions for our employees and our citizens who visit the town. These conditions are primarily due to moisture, humidity and problems, fresh air exchange. The final design package will be submitted with estimates and we hope to come forward with a complete cost estimate and plan for doing construction funding in the future, preferably this spring. The next one is the McCall facade. As you are aware, it was called School is originally 1932 built. The facade was done then. This is the part, that beautiful part facing Main Street with the brickwork, the precast work and masonry work. Unfortunately, it's very old. It's in a state of acceleration, accelerated deterioration causing the concrete, the mortar to leak and have water problems entering the building, addressing flashing issues and infiltrating now the interior of the building. Verded under ballisters, which are growing. We have a major concern with the ballisters, which are becoming unsafe. And architectural preservation funds have developed recommendations for the repair and the replacement for all the failed elements will be done. And a supplement work request to move forward will be coming forward in the spring. The West Side Fire Station, as you crawl last fall, we decided to look at the West Side Fire Department, the appropriate funds for repair that fire station. The first step was to hire an architect to allow farm and perform an evaluation of existing conditions and develop plans to upgrade the kitchen, the bathroom. However, after further investigation, as usual, additional work was demanded. During the phase, determine the work was much more extensive than we ever anticipated. With this appropriation, we will fund updates, the fire station, the kitchen, the bathroom areas, as well as upgrade the building's AC and air handling systems. The DPW storage garage, if you go back many years ago, probably about a decade, decade ago, we started planning what we're going to do with the DPW. First was to rebuild the garage facility, the offices and update it. Second was to install roofs in a couple of buildings, one the sign shop and one the back department. A couple of years ago, we took down the quote wall and the old stables because they were unsafe and we promised the neighbors and town meeting that we would be back. Well, we're back. We put up a temporary fence, but now we have to find a place to store our equipment, trucks and supplies. And we're now determining that this is the time to do it. We asked them for funds to evaluate it with schematic design. Is completed, we'll be requesting four funds for a planning on a new garage storage building. Lincoln School chilla is for a schematic design and specifications. There again, the cooling plant at Lincoln School is original to the 1998, 2000 got renovation and the elements of these systems have started to begin to fail. Over 20 years, difficulty with recent compressor replacement, like everything, getting parts and everything, and the overall aging condition of the cooling system, as well as there are more opportunities to develop a much more efficient design equipment for a chiller replacement. This $60,000 is just for design and engineering. We expect to come forward with a request for additional funds in this possible spring and get this job done also. Lincoln School site work is a real problem. We're asking for design and development funds. Shortly after the 98, 2000 Lincoln Elementary School building project, the front of the building along the parkway facing the river started to settle and crack and deteriorate prematurely. We've worked, DPW have worked trying to address this, but it's really has to be a total effort. And we want to develop, we want money to develop a plan, not only to construct the project, but to reallocate some of things, addressing ADA's problems and determining what we really need for sidewalks and stairs. My planning committee will be seeking funds to complete bid documents for a detailed estimate and cost basis. We do plan on moving forward on this project soon also. McCall control conversion. These are the manner controls on the older part of the building. Last year, we asked a fund to do a test trial on a small area. It worked very well. We have been working with the school committee. They're going to be using some federal funds to do phase one and they're asking the capital committee to fund $26,000 to complete phase one. committee to fund twenty-six thousand dollars to complete Phase One. Moving on to the capital stabilization fund. Well, it's time to replace fire engine again. The current fire engine, which is a spare, is twenty-two years old and has served the town very well. Replacement in this fire engine will allow the two thousand and ten Engine Four, which is basically no longer reliable as a frontline piece to become our backup. Engine Three is, like I say, twenty-two years old. It's getting unreliable, and with the increasing demands put on Engine Four, we feel it is important and necessary to purchase a new engine for mainline piece of equipment. Our Washington Street Bridge and the Cross Street Bridges had a mass DOT inspection back in the spring of two thousand and twenty-one, and identified several areas in the bridges that needed to be worked. The town did hire Western and Stanton to complete an independent evaluation and observe the deficiencies as stated. We are recommending additional studies, and this request will be for engineering permitting for repairs in both bridges, and we expect to return this spring to ask for funding for both bridges. Triangle Master Plan is actually a great idea. We've looked over all the traffic requests. They've been brought forward by individual groups, our people, our boards. We feel a comprehensive study of the town traffic areas, including pedestrian, bicycle, and motor vehicle is the way to go. This will prioritize the most important areas of the town, and then later on, the next few years, we will be able to address these in a logical and sensible and meaningful way to address traffic situations in our town. Current ambulance is seven years old. Chief advised us it's about time to replace this and use it as a backup unit, and we'll get rid of the backup unit. New ambulance lasts about seven years. It's a revenue source for the town, and it's a public safety source and a public safety need for the citizens of our community. The last request is a request to replace a Ford Escape, which is about thirteen years old, with a brand-new hybrid SUV dash-type vehicle. Current vehicle is in good mechanical shape, but the body and the rust is just deteriorated, and there is concerns that it will not pass safety inspection the next time around. Roger will address the water and sewer on the South Reservoir Dam, and we ask for your positive vote on all capital projects, and thank you in advance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson, for that. That was very thorough. Moving to the boards and committees' recommendations on the fourteen motions for Article twelve. Further on the question, Chair of the Select Board, Ms. Susan Verdickio.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Select Board recommends favorable action on the capital items and the capital motions, and thanks the Capital Planning Committee for all of their hard work.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Chair of FinCom, Dr. Blackwell.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator, and Deputy Moderator Allison, Sam Allison, for upgrading me. So FinCom voted in favor of most of these capital items unanimously. There were two, however, that we did diverge, and that was Article twelve, Motion Five for DPW Storage. There was one member of FinCom who voted against this, who thought the amount was too high, and it wasn't clear if the expense would justify the, or would ensure the sufficient preservation of the DPW equipment. And the other motion for which FinCom was not unanimous was the town-wide traffic master plan study, the Motion Twelve. And initially, this motion failed because FinCom members were concerned about conducting a study now when there's so much construction and road closures, and also when there's reduced vehicular traffic because of COVID and working from home. However, we learned more, and we revoted this item, and it passed five to four. And the minority questioned the methodology of the study, wanting more data collection to take place, but the majority thought it was a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Blackwell. Further on the question, Chair of the Planning Board, Mr. Deibgerius.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Moderator. The Planning Board only considered Motion Number Twelve, the traffic study, and they unanimously supported it as it would address the goals in the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Mr. Chris Nixon of the School Committee.
Madam Moderator, nothing to contribute tonight unless there are specific questions on the school projects, but I'm happy to do so.
Mr. Nixon, I assume that the School Committee supported unanimously on their projects?
Oh, yes, these are, the, the school projects, the Lincoln School, the McCall, and so forth, were all School Committee priorities that were put forward to capital. So we certainly appreciate the support and the support of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. My apologies, I was told earlier that you were going to speak to these motions. I did not mean to jump over your chair, my apologies.
No worries. But if I might, if I might add, with respect to the controls for the McCall project that Mr. Johnson mentioned, the, the reason why capital is seeking only twenty-six thousand dollars in funding is that our new superintendent, Dr. Hackett, identified some eligible ESER funding coming from the federal government that's specifically tagged for HVAC projects. So at his suggestion, the School Committee unanimously supported contributing a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars towards this project. So we're excited about it and have every expectation that work can be completed in time for fall next year.
Thank you very much for that information, and it's good to hear that the first mention of our superintendent is finding us money. Further on the question, Jack Lemenerge, Chair of the Historical Commission.
Okay, I'm here now. Yes, the, Madam Moderator, thank you. As the, as the Chair, Mr. Johnson noted, the middle school was built in nineteen thirty-two. Its facade is unique, as he said, and is a significant contributor to this building's historical character. The Historical Commission feels that it must be preserved. Assistant Town Manager Mark Tugood and Special Projects Engineer Meg White have kept the commission informed on the very necessary effort to restore and refurbish this facade. We will continue to be engaged throughout to ensure this facade is properly preserved. The Historical Commission supports this modest appropriation and urges a yes vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lemenerge. Moving on, further on the question, town meeting members. So as a reminder, we are going to go motion by motion. We're starting with Motion One. So I'm gonna ask that all discussion relate just to the motion that's before you for discussion purposes. The first motion is for the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand specifically for the main fire station HVAC system. Seeing. Next on the question, Mr. Alan Field of Precinct Five, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. You can hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you very much.
My name is Alan Field from Precinct Five. My comments, Madam Moderator, are through you to the Capital Planning Committee. I'm concerned in particular with Motion One being the most expansion motion. Motion One of Article Twelve asks that the meeting approve the appropriation of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for renovation of the HVAC system for the downtown fire station in Winchester. I understand much thought has been given to making good use of some of the existing HVAC infrastructure, but the extraordinary cost remains in renovating this older system. I calculate that a new, efficient, ductless, multi-unit air-source heat pump system costs about four thousand dollars per installed unit or so-called head. At that rate, that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars would pay for a hundred and eighty-seven unit system. But of course, there are not a hundred and eighty-seven rooms in the fire and police stations. So I sort of see a disconnect there. I would like to know if new and less expensive options such as this, rather than renovation, have been considered or evaluated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Field. I believe this question is best to be directed to Mr. Lawson of the DPW. Mr. Lawson, would you be able to provide us more information about the different options you looked into for cost savings on this line item? There you are, Mr. Lawson.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Town meeting, when we set out to look at the problems going on at the fire station, we went with the approach of could we repair, supplement, or do we have to replace, and then evaluate different efficiency options? We did look at specifically the heat pump slash AC units and reviewed it with Ken Pruitt, the new Sustainability Director, and we all agreed that the engineering we did was moving in the right direction. We did look at different options.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Mr. Robert Geseski of Precinct Five.
Hello, can you hear me now? All right. So I just canceled my, my request because my question was exactly what was just asked, which was, hey, has our new Sustainability Director had the opportunity to review this and the other line items here? And the answer, it sounds like, was already answered as yes. So thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Russell Gay of Precinct Eight.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just had a question regarding the, if there was more of a breakdown in costs for the items for the construction engineering?
Thank you very much, Mr. Gay. Mr. Lawson of the DPW, do you have a breakdown further of the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for the main fire station HVAC system?
I don't have it in hand, but we do have a full engineer's breakdown of costs. If you gave me a few minutes, I could get it, but how we go through it is up to you.
I'll give you a few minutes to grab it because there's other people in question. We'll come back to that, and it's just, I believe they're not looking for if it's just a generalized breakdown of that number in main categories. Further on the question, Mr. Anthony Conti of Precinct Two.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I wonder if Mr. Lawson could specifically address the question asked by Mr. Field with respect to whether the committee had looked into the use of the ductless units that Mr. Field identified as costing four thousand, approximately four thousand dollars per unit, which seemed to be a much more economical way to address the problem than rehabilitating the system at a cost of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. He could specifically address the question of whether they looked into the ductless units, and if, if not, why not, and, you know, address that specific point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lawson, did you have any chance to grab the quote?
I didn't because I was listening to this.
I was gonna tell you what the next question was.
So we, we did look at, so understanding what's going on at the public safety building is that it's the delivery system, not the generation system of the cold and hot water. We're removing VAV boxes and putting in a different style ventilation system in each of the rooms that delivers through a coil. We're adding an energy recovery wheel that does not exist now, which is part of our desire to, at least, to bring as high a level of efficiency as we can. To put the ductless splits in, we would also have to put new equipment that would draw electricity. We would not be saving money because we would still have to run the chiller and boiler that's there to provide a hot and chilled water to the rest of the building, being the police station, the apparatus base, things like that. So we did look at it and brought these other efficiencies in when talking through with Ken Pruitt and the engineer on the specific item. The, the, on the ductless split, this is Mr. Pruitt's words, "Ductless mini splits would not make sense in this building because hot and cold water piping already exists this distribution system for heat and AC. If we want to move to an air-source heat pump system to heat and cool the building, it will be much more efficient from a cost and energy standpoint to install a central ASHP. Use the existing hot and cold distribution system, even if we have to replace the existing boiler system, the fan coil boxes that blow hot and cold air into rooms don't work properly." So basically, we're reusing the generation portions, and we're replacing the distribution, and all the added equipment would also bring a higher electrical load. We just put a brand-new generator on that building that is sized to the existing electrical service, so we would run the risk of having to replace the existing generator, bring in a new service. All those would add up to the cost, and then we would have to locate somewhere the equipment that would actually do the cooling and the heating of the water for these many splits. So there's structural work that would have to be done, and many other issues that would bring the cost up. So we did look at it very extensively. We are moving a little, we're moving along because of the fact that the firefighters have had to deal with very, very poor balance of heat in there when they come back from their fires in the, in the heat of the summer. They don't have a very good ability to cool down, and it's, it's become a huge issue with the firefighters' union as well.
Thank you very much. Good explanation.
Thank you. While you have a minute, I'm going, I'm going to let you find the quote to answer the town meeting members' question, and I'm going to call the next person online. I will tell you the question, so you can grab the note. Further on the question, Jared Cummings of Precinct Four. While we wait, Mr. Pruitt, while you're here, there was a question regarding the capital planning items and if you reviewed them.
Yes, Madam Moderator. This is Ken Pruitt, Sustainability Director, and also town meeting member in Precinct Six. I did take a look, not at every capital item, but certainly at the fire station HVAC system. And Mr. Lawson did read, read the relevant part of an analysis that I wrote up for that, which is essentially that ductless many splits do make sense when, essentially, when you can't use a central air-source heat pump system. In this case, the, the work being done now will set us up for conversion in the future to a central air-source heat pump system using the same distribution network and terminal boxes that will be installed with the project that has been proposed tonight. The added benefit is when the existing boiler and/or chiller serving both the fire station and police station need to be replaced, they can be replaced with a central air-source heat pump that then serves both buildings. And we end up with essentially both buildings being fully electrified, which is one of the key goals in the 2020 Climate Action Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt, and welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Jared Cummings of Precinct Four.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And you called me right as I withdrew my request because I was going to ask about a more information from the Sustainability Director. So thank you, and thank you to the, for the deputy moderator for helping me out with my incessant QA.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Coming, my apologies. Going on to Mr. Lawson, any luck on the breakdown of the $750,000?
Looking at, at this point, we're 90% design, 698,000 for construction, 52 for further engineering service, and 52,000 for engineering contingencies.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Mr. Conti, I see that your hand is raised again. Did you have a follow-up question?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing that there's no one else in queue, please turn your attention to the voter. We are voting on Motion One of Article 12. This is to consider approving, appropriating $750,000, $750,000 for the main fire station HVAC. Town meeting members, just to let you know that this requires a two-thirds vote required. There are 146 received with 98 required to pass. There are 140 in the affirmative and six in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Moving on, Motion Number Two, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $154,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for the town hall HVAC system, including engineering and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Town meeting members, if you have any questions on this or have any opinions you would like to share, now is your time. Otherwise, we'll move to vote. Seeing no, seeing that town meeting is ready for your question, a two-thirds vote of members present is required. The question will be brought up on your V voter screen and is on your motion booklet on page 27. Please turn your attention to V voter once it up. Here it is. You have 30 seconds. Thank you, town meeting. There are 154 voting, 103 required to pass. There are 153 in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion, there are two-thirds in the affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Moving onward to Motion Number Three on page 27 of your blue booklet, is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $24,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of the 2002 for the McCall Middle School facade repair and restoration, including professional architectural and engineering and design services and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Further on the question, any questions from town meeting members? Seeing no questions by members of town meeting, a two-thirds vote of members present is required. The question will be placed up on your V voter screen and is in your motion book on page 27. This is Article 12, Motion Three, which specifically is for the McCall School facade. 30 seconds, town meeting. Thank you. There are 153 voting, 102 required to pass. There are 151 in the affirmative and two in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Moving on to Motion Number Four. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $185,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for the West Side Fire Station, including construction, professional design services, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Any questions from town meeting members? Seeing no question, no town meeting members rise? A two-thirds vote of members present is required. The question is on yours, will be placed on your V voter screen and is printed in page 27 of your blue book. Please turn your attention to your V voter screen and make your vote and cast your vote. There are 145 voting, 97 required to be adopted. 141 are in the affirmative and four are in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Moving on to Motion Number Five, we are now moving to page 28 of your blue booklet, is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $134,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for the Department of Public Works Storage Garage Units, including professional design services and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Town meeting members, if you have any questions, now is your time. Seeing no town meeting member rise to speak, a two-thirds vote of the members present is required. The question will be placed on your V voter screen and, as noted previously, is on page 28 of your blue booklet. Please turn your attention to V voter and select yes if you are in favor and no if you are not. Again, this is $134,000 for the Department of Public Works Storage Garage. There are 152 members voting, 102 required to be adopted. There are 144 in the affirmative and eight in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Moving on to Motion Number Six, is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $60,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for evaluation and engineering of the Lincoln Elementary School chiller replacement accessory HVAC equipment and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Further on the question, town meeting members? Seeing no one rise to speak, a two-thirds vote of members present is required. The question will be placed on your V voter screen and, as noted, is on page 28 of your blue booklet. Please turn your attention to V voter and vote yes if you are in favor, no if you are not. This is $60,000 for the Building Stabilization Fund for Lincoln Elementary School chiller replacement and accessory HVAC equipment. There are 147 members voting, 98 required in the affirmative to be adopted. 146 are in the affirmative and one is in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Moving on to Motion Number Seven on page 28 of your blue booklet, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $50,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for the Lincoln Elementary School site work, including architectural, engineering, and design services and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Further on the question, Ms. Michelle Pryor of Precinct Four.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I was hoping maybe someone from Capitol could explain is, it wasn't clear to me from reading in the presentation. Are we trying to fix the building that has settled or the land that has shifted or the sidewalks? So I don't know if that's for Mr. Johnson or someone else, but I'm not, it's not clear to me what the challenge is that we're trying to remediate with the site work. I'm totally in favor. I'm just wondering where it's, is it manifest in foundation and sidewalks and, you know, hillside? If someone could answer that question, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, would you be able to provide us more information about the conditions that are occurring over at Lincoln Elementary School or direct me to who would be best to answer that question? I believe, Mr. Nixon, you are being asked to answer the question regarding, can you provide us more information regarding what is going on at Lincoln Elementary School? What this money is being allocated specifically for?
Sure can. Happy to do it. I appreciate the question from Ms. Pryor. So the good news is the Lincoln Foundation, the building, the facade itself is just fine. And in fact, the sidewalks along the curb line, along Main Street, Mystic Valley Parkway, Washington Street are also just fine. What we're really talking about is the hardscape in between. So think about the walk-off pads where they meet the building, the meandering pathways. There are a number of stairs you may be familiar with, three or four treads and some pipe column handrails, particularly the main facade that faces the library and the pond. So it, it's all sort of that smaller hardscape that has really deteriorated. And as Mr. Johnson indicated in his remarks, it appears this is really just due to poor construction and poor foundation prep. The DPW actually found there was settlement, gosh, four or five years after the building was complete, and have really done their best to kind of repair this. But the nature of the problem is such that it's really not fixable. One just has to dig it up completely and rebuild it. However, I appreciate Ms. Pryor's question because the Capitol Planning Committee specifically came to town meeting last year and said, "We don't necessarily want to rebuild what's there today. If there is some, if there's another design solution that is simpler, perhaps less costly, particularly one that might provide more gathering space for students during the day in fair weather, we're interested in that." And so that work was actually funded by town meeting last cycle, so we do have a concept plan. The funding that's being requested tonight under this motion takes that concept a step further and turns it into construction documents. So I hope I've answered that question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. Seeing no other town meeting members rise, a two-thirds vote of members present is required. The question will be placed on your V voter screen. Again, this is Motion Number Seven on page 28 of your blue booklet. Motion Number Seven is up on your V voter. 30 seconds, please. There are 152 members voting with 102 required to be adopted. There are 151 in the affirmative and one in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Moving on to Motion Number Eight, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $26,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for the Phase One of the McCall Middle School pneumatic control system conversion, including engineering, construction, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Further on the question, town meeting members? Seeing no town meeting member rise? I believe we turn to our V voter, and it's time for the vote. A two-thirds vote of the members present is required. The question will be on your V voter. Again, this is number eight on page 28 of your blue booklet. This is for $26,000 for the McCall Middle School pneumatic control system conversion. There are 146 voting with 98 required to be adopted. 146 are in the affirmative, zero are in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative, the motion is adopted. Moving on to Motion Number Nine, is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $725,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for the replacement of fire department engine three and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Further on the question, town meeting members, Jack Lemenezha of Precinct Six.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. A multi-part question, perhaps, for Mr. Johnson, I'm not sure, though. In the past, it's been my understanding that Winchester has sold its used fire engines. And in so doing, those fire engines must have been rehabilitated whether by Winchester or the town that was buying it. I would, just out of curiosity, I Googled this particular model, which was a two-thousand E-one Cyclone two and discovered that there are used models out there for sale by other fire departments around the country. One going for as much as seventy-nine thousand dollars. So question number one, is the town intending to sell this? And if not, is it, did the rehabilitation and refurbishment of this fire engine was, did that come into consideration in this matter? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief Tustin, I believe I would like to ask you the question of if the consideration has been made to sell the used engine and the second question is rehabbing the engine.
Madam Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
So to answer the question, we are considering a trade-in of the engine three as part of the bid package that would go out. And we have come, have spent considerable money over the years to keep engine three refurbished so that it is roadworthy and able to be used. But our plan is to have that traded in as part of the bid package when we go out to bid for the new engine.
Thank you. Seeing no other town meeting members rise, it looks like you are ready for the question. A two-thirds vote of members present is required. The question will be placed on your V voter screen. And for those who are looking at your book, it is on page twenty-eight. We are looking at motion number nine. Please turn your attention to V voter and vote yes if you are in favor, no if you are opposed. There are a hundred and forty-nine town meeting members voting, a hundred required to be adopted. There are a hundred and forty-five in the affirmative, four in the negative. The affirmative has it with two-thirds and the motion is adopted. Moving onward to motion number ten is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate sixty-six thousand dollars from the capital stabilization fund established under chapter sixty-nine of the Acts of two thousand and two for the Washington Street Bridge, including engineering and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Seeing no town meeting members rise at this time, we will move the vote. If you turn your attention to your V voter, there are two-thirds vote of the membership present is required for passage. You're voting on motion ten, which is for the Washington Street Bridge. There are a hundred and fifty-two town meeting members voted, a hundred and two we required for adopted. The hundred and fifty-one in the affirmative, one in the negative. The affirmative has it with the two-thirds and the motion is adopted. Moving on to motion number eleven, town meeting members, I'm being requested to cut the thirty seconds down to twenty. So let's do it and keep moving forward. Motion number eleven, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate fifty-five thousand dollars from the capital stabilization fund established under chapter sixty-nine of the Acts of two thousand and two for the reconstruction of the Cross Street Bridge, including engineering and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Tom meeting members, further on the question. Seeing no town meeting member rise, I believe we are ready to move the vote. A two-thirds vote of members present is required. The question will be on your V voter screen and as noted, it's on page twenty-eight of your blue booklet. Tom meeting members, this is the twenty seconds. We're now going to cut it down to twenty seconds for voting. Starting now. There are a hundred and fifty-nine town meeting members voting, a hundred and six required for adoption, a hundred and fifty-eight are in the affirmative. And there is one in the negative. There are two-thirds in the affirmative and the motion is adopted. Moving on to motion number twelve on page twenty-eight is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the capital stabilization fund established under chapter sixty-nine of the Acts of two thousand and two for town-wide traffic plan study, including engineering and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Further on the question, Dr. Miller of precinct six.
Hi, it's, it's, it's the male version of Dr. Miller. Thank you. The reason I speak is I, and I've spoken to Mr. Too Good and to, to the acting town manager, Ms. Rudolph, about this. I, I have no problem spending the money. I'm a huge fan of the engineering department. But I, I think that we have to remain cognizant of the fact that master planning should follow data collection. And what I'm concerned about is that I, I think in spending this money, I hope the engineering department will collect data for, on traffic. For example, what percentage of the people sitting in line at the bottom of Wildwood trying to get to Cambridge, where are they coming from? Are they coming from Lexington? Are they coming from VO? You know, we don't have good data. We haven't had good data for a long time. And what I'm concerned about is if it's relatively easy to collect data and to know where the traffic is moving, where it's coming from, and we can do that over time. So it's that, it's that time series of data that allows us to say, "Traffic's getting worse at this intersection and here's the likely reason, and then here's the likely solution." So what I'm concerned about is that we don't convert ready, aim, fire to fire, aim, and then get ready to do a project. Because I, you know, you spend engineering money, when you spend engineering money, it's about five cents of the dollar you will spend on construction. So I would just urge, I'm not, this isn't, this is short money, I get it. But the reason FinCom voted originally against this was that we wanted to see it more fleshed out that we were going to do some data collection before we started doing transportation master plans. So I just would call that to everyone's attention and, and request that the engineering department take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Further on the question, Michael Galvin of precinct two.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, I was struck by what the comments out of FinCom and thinking about how recent years have been absolutely crazy with traffic with COVID, the shutdown of Swan Street, the shutdown of Washington Street for the national grid, the EverSource projects. I'm just wondering how the traffic study would handle those major changes.
Thank you. To our town manager, Ms. Rudolph, would you be able to provide us more information regarding how this study might be able to address the ever-changing issues we're facing at these times?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So this, this study is really just the first step in a long-term planning, engineering, construction effort aimed at improving safety townwide for, for not just vehicles, but pedestrians and bikes as well. So this first phase is less about kind of the hardcore traffic data collection and more about identifying issues and priorities for the town. So those existing kind of projects that we see around town should not have a dramatic impact on the results of this planning effort at this point. We are, you know, we, we as a town have a lot of concerns from the, I've heard a lot of concerns from residents about the overall safety of our folks commuting and walking and biking through town. So the goal is to really just develop kind of a universe of projects and concerns for what we've heard from residents and then lay out a prioritization plan in terms of how we can either very short, look at short-term recommendations, medium-term, and long-term recommendations that that may require additional engineering construction, coming back to the Capital Planning Committee. I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Robert Deering of precinct one.
Can you hear me, Madam Moderator?
Yes, I can.
If my question through you to the acting town manager, who's also the town engineer, how will any action be taken while you're doing this study for streets that have severe traffic problems? Namely, I being one of the street I live on. A short time ago, we had had three police cruisers with flashing lights on the street. I've almost been hit head-on with traffic. So is, you're going to, for these traffic problems, are you going to say, "I'm going to wait until I get the result of this master study"? Are these issues going to be addressed? Because in my street, and I'm not the only street in town, someday there's going to be a serious accident with a child hit or whatever. And I think waiting for the study to be done to correct this problem is, is, is going to be problematic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deering. To our town manager, Ms. Rudolph, could you provide information on if projects throughout the town will be deferred while this planning process is taking place?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I think, Mr. Deering, what you just talked about is kind of the scope of what we're actually looking to kind of develop as part of this planning effort. It's really sort of identifying those areas around town where we do have serious safety concerns, be it for vehicular issues, traffic for pedestrians or for bikes in this community. Hopefully, there'll be some very short-term issues that, and solutions that we're able to identify during this initial planning process in some of those locations. I know that a lot of the locations will require additional study and longer-term solutions through engineering and construction potentially. But I'm hopeful that we'll be able to identify some of those short-term things that we can help right away put into place that will improve things for residents around town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rudolph. Further on the question, Carol Savage of precinct five.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I rise to just follow up with some of the questions that have been asked specifically around, in my precinct, precinct five over near Wedgemere Train Station. As the construction has been taking place on both EverSource project and with the town train station underway, traffic patterns have been significantly altered from what they had been pre-COVID. So I guess I would just be curious to know how it is, we do plan to sort of think about that. I do think town meeting member Miller's questions around causal factors, you know, is there any way to get insight into where these, where traffic is coming from and how, when these construction projects end? They might change. So, or is this really focused on right now, short-term issues that we are experiencing, maybe even because of this construction project? I don't know if that, that is clear, but I'm somewhat concerned that we study traffic patterns that are going to change six months from now.
Thank you. Ms. Rudolph, would you be able to provide us some information regarding the short-term versus long-term anticipated results of this study?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So the goal of this is really to identify those long-term issues and some of these are probably issues that were happening in your neighborhood pre-COVID and pre-construction, right, in terms of safety concerns that you might have had in that area. The construction with respect to the EverSource 115 project will be substantially wrapped up by the end of this construction season. So as we move forward with this kind of master planning study, hopefully they'll, you know, we'll be able to focus on sort of those longer-term concerns in that quarter as opposed to kind of those short-term construction-related issues they may have experienced. But those safety concerns, you know, are important for us to hear and I think the goal is to really have kind of a community-wide kind of brainstorming session as part of this study to really understand the concerns that folks have regarding safety and also to look at the data that we have, not just with respect to to traffic counts, but also to accident reports that we have at various locations around town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing, oh, there. Further on the question, Ms. Meredith Mason Crowley of precinct one.
Sorry about that. Quick question, Madam Moderator, to our acting town manager. You mentioned a community component that you will have on this. Could you just elaborate a little bit more on that? And how will local neighborhoods know that their area is going to be studied?
Thank you. Acting town manager, Ms. Rudolph, could you provide some information about public outreach during this process?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Moderator. So we haven't finalized the scope for this study and that's one of the things we'll be working on, should this be funded with the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee. But the goal is to really have a very collaborative public process. So we'll have meetings with the select board, we'll have meetings with the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee. And then the, the idea is that we'd have a series of kind of public listening sessions that are advertised through various channels that we have available to us around town to invite as many members of the public as possible to these kind of listening sessions where we hope to have some dialogue about concerns that you, that you see in your neighborhood or the concerns that you see as you're, as you're moving around town. So maybe, you know, you're uncomfortable walking to a certain place from your own home because you feel like it's not safe or you're, you feel uncomfortable having your children walk to a certain location due to some concerns in those areas. So that's the goal, is to sort of have a community-wide kind of listening sessions to hear the issues and concerns that people have surrounding transportation in Winchester. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Dorothy Symboli of precinct six.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This question is for town manager Rudolph. Is any portion of this study already projected to be aimed at bike lanes and bike transportation throughout Winchester? Or is this mostly focused on safety, slowing traffic, and managing traffic that's flowing through Winchester and other safety concerns? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rudolph, could you provide more information on how bike, pedestrians, and cars relate into this, along with the safety of those, what you anticipate to receive as a result?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So yes, bike safety and bike accommodations throughout the town will be part of it. Obviously, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is just a start. And I would expect, as we get into this, we may find that some, that an outcome from this master plan may be that we want to develop a more detailed kind of bike network plan or bike lane network plan throughout the town. Or we may find from kind of this preliminary work that we're able to just move forward straight away with some, you know, on-the-ground changes. So it's hard to say from, from this point exactly what the outcome of this master plan will be in terms of either a recommendation for a future analysis or a recommendation for a physical improvement. But the bike lane piece and bike accommodations will certainly be part of what we're evaluating. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other town meeting members rise, a two-thirds vote of members present is required. The question will be placed on your V voter screen and as again is motion number twelve on page twenty- The question will be placed on your V voter screen, and as then is motion number 12 on page 28 of your Blue Book. This is for $165,000 for a town-wide traffic plan study. Two-thirds vote is required. It is now on your V voter screen. Thank you. There are 144 town meeting members voting, 96 required for pass. There are 119 in affirmative and 25 in the negative. There are two-thirds in affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Motion number 13 moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $350,000 for the capital stabilization fund established under chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for the replacement of a fire department ambulance and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Further on the question, Mr. Brian McCarthy of Precinct Four.
Apologies. I didn't hit the buttons right.
Thank you very much.
The discussion on the ambulance talked about it being a revenue source through you to the proponents. Has there been ever any thought of carving out a portion of the revenues, the ambulance for an ambulance-type fund? Maybe not hard into an account, but in a soft account, so that we can use that to pay for itself the next time that it needs to be replaced in seven years or so?
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask that question of Mr. Johnson, Chair of Capital, if there has been discussion about creating a fund to help address the ambulance and fire trucks replacements.
Hello? Good evening again. Actually, this year, we brought the question of the ambulance to the Select Board. Our consideration was that this approximately generates $4 million and that the selectmen had implied after town meeting, they would look at it probably within the budget process and evaluate at that point in time. So we believe it's a very good idea, an allocation of, you know, $40,000, $50,000 over a seven-year period would address the ambulance situation. No, we have not gone that far and talked to them about a fire truck. It's a little bit different, but the ambulance does have a revenue source and would like to evaluate that situation given time with the Select Board in the budget process this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no other town meeting member raise their hand to speak, a two-thirds vote of the members present is required. The question is on your V voter screen. It is motion number 13 on page 28 of your Blue Book. 145 members of town meeting voting, 97 required for adoption. There are 143 in affirmative and two in the negative. There are two-thirds in affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Moving onward, motion number 14. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $40,000 for the capital stabilization fund established under chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 for the replacement of the Department of Public Works manager vehicle and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Members of town meeting, seeing no one rise. A two-thirds vote of members present is required. The question will be placed on your V voter screen. And this is motion number 14 for $40,000 for the Department of Public Works manager vehicle. It is now on your screen. There are 146 town meeting members voting with 98 required for adoption. There are 140 in affirmative and six in the negative. There are two-thirds in affirmative, and the motion is adopted. So that closes out town meeting members are Article 12. We then will move on to Article 13, which is sponsored by Capital Planning Committee. It is moved and seconded that $72,000 be appropriated to pay costs of a feasibility study, including related engineering, planning, and evaluation work for the repair, reconstruction, and improvement of the South Reservoir Dam and for the payment of all costs incidental related thereto. But to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 7, or under any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of the bonds or notes approved by this vote, unless any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, that the town manager shall be authorized to have oversight of the project. In accordance with Section 4, Subsection 2 of the Town of Winchester Home Rule Charter, the town manager shall have the authority to enter into contracts and approve payments with respect to the project. Further on the question, the proponent, Vice Chair of Capital Planning Committee, Mr. Roger McPeak, which will be on, which will be put up by our IT director. Thank you.
I'm here to talk this evening about the South Reservoir Dam, and I know what some of you are probably thinking. Oh, no, it's that dam guy again. And yes, it is. I seem to be the designated person to speak to you from Capital Planning on all things dam-related. Another group of you are probably going, hey, didn't we hear about this the last time around? And unfortunately, no, this is not deja vu all over again. This is the South Reservoir Dam. We have been speaking about the North Reservoir Dam. So what's happened? Much like the North Reservoir Dam in the biannual dam inspection, this dam was downgraded from satisfactory to poor condition. We're obligated to make repairs if we intend to continue to use this reservoir, and since it is the direct feed into our water system, we will want to continue using this reservoir, which means that we will be mandated to make repairs to the dam. Major items of, or major problems that were identified are vegetation and trees that are on the dry side, backside of the dam, and also there is some seepage through the dam that will have to be addressed. This is why we hire engineers to evaluate these things. So while the seepage is, and I've walked both the North Reservoir and the South Reservoir, while the seepage is nowhere near as extensive as it is on the North Reservoir Dam, the engineers do need to take a look at this and evaluate whether or not remediation will be necessary. One thing we can tell you is the trees and vegetation that are on the south, on the dry side of the dam are going to have to be removed. And how extensive is that problem? Well, as you can see, there are some very large trees extensively on the dry side of the dam. This is looking down from the middle part of the dam, looking down toward the toe or the base of the dam. Given the regular spacing of these trees and the fact that they're all of the same variety, it's quite possible that our predecessors decades ago, many decades ago, planted these trees, thinking perhaps at the time that they would help stabilize the backside of the dam, and these days that is considered to be a no-no. So how big are these trees and how many are there? Well, to provide some perspective, I asked our hard-working director of the DPWJ Guild to stand next to one. You can see that these are full-growth trees that have been there for a very long time, and they're quite large. How many are they? This is looking up in one section from the toe or base of the dam up toward the reservoir. So you can see that there's extensive growth on the backside of the dam, and all of these trees and underbrush are going to need to be removed. This represents hundreds of yards of trees, and it's not going to be cheap. So at this point, we're requesting $72,000 to be bonded against the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for an engineering evaluation of the dam. That will allow engineers to come in, take a look at things like the seepage and the extent of the other additional repairs that need to be done, and give us a full report on what has to be done. We will then come back. If this follows the same path as the North Reservoir Dam, we'll come back in the Spring Town Meeting and be asking for more funds to do the detailed engineering work on what repairs exactly have to be done. I wish I had better news, but that's the situation. We request your support on this item, and I hope to see you all in the spring in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McPeak. Further on the question, do we have recommendations from boards or committees for town meeting's consideration? Ms. Susan Verdicchio of the Select Board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Select Board voted to recommend favorable action on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Dr. Blackwell of FINCOM.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. FINCOM voted unanimously in favor of this motion.
Thank you very much. Turning our attention, town meeting members, please use your Speak to, Request a Speak button on V voter to notify me. Mr. Stephen Campbell, I see that your hand is raised. Is there something that we may be able to help you with? I'm assuming it's an accident, but if it is not, please use your Q and A or the phone numbers provided on your V voter screen to let us know, and we'll be able to support you. Further on the question, Mr. Tony Conti of Precinct Two.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm very much in favor of protecting the dam, and I just want to have a question for Mr. McPeak. If the trees are removed, I assume the problem is that the roots and all will have the potential for undermining the dam, causing further problems. If those roots are removed, will that present a risk of a dam failure, having, you know, having to, you know, dig out those roots and undermining the dam? Do we run any kind of a risk of catastrophic failure as a result of having to remove the roots?
Thank you, Mr. Conti. I'm going to turn that question, actually, because we have the engineers here who will be able to give you the really technical answer to that. So I'm going to direct the question to Weston Sampson and Tool, which other one is the most appropriate, which I believe it might be Weston Sampson. And the question is, is if we remove the roots, what risk do we have of failure thereafter? Give us one moment. We're just trying to find the engineer to promote them so they can speak. Ms. Rudolph, would you be able to provide us the exact name of the consultant?
So it's either David Elmar or Taween Heesler.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much. And this is a representative from Weston Sampson, town meeting members.
Yes, once the trees are removed, the root ball is removed, it will be immediately compacted, backfilled and compacted with engineered fill. So this is done very regularly when the trees are removed and the ball that's opened, you know, they're, I mean, they're not that deep, but as soon as they're open, they're basically backfilled and compacted with engineered fill material.
And just to confirm that, is there's no risk of catastrophic failure with that?
No, not, no, there isn't.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Ms. Michelle Pryor of Precinct Four.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I don't know that I have a question. I'm in favor of the article. Just in doing some reading today in advance of the meeting and looking at the infrastructure bill that was just passed in Washington over the weekend, there appears to be $55 billion earmarked toward waterworks infrastructure improvements. So I would just encourage our, you know, state delegations and local government to, if we can access funding for waterworks, think broadly about what needs to be repaired and think broadly about where the waterworks, you know, issues are in 2021 and beyond. So just an encouragement. There's potentially significant federal funding to support the next several projects like these. Let's hope.
Thank you very much for that. Seeing no other town meeting members rise, I believe that we are ready for the question. Two-thirds vote is required of the members present. The question will be placed on your V voter screen and is printed on page 29 of your Blue booklet. Please turn your attention to your V voter screen and select yes if you are in favor and no if you are opposed. There are 144 town meeting members voting, 96 required for adoption. There are 143 in the affirmative, one in the negative. There are two-thirds in affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Moving onward, we are going to Article 14, which is on page 30 of your Blue booklets. At this time, I'm going to take actually a five-minute break. We'll return back at 9:55 before we take up Article 14. We will see you shortly. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Alan Ayden here at the Windcam Studios, and as you may have just seen, Tom Meeting is on a five-minute break. And apparently, the clock here at the Windcam Studio has not been reset for daylight eastern, daylight standard time, Eastern Standard Time. That's what it is. Okay. Let's talk about what's happened so far tonight. We're on Session 3 of the Winchester's Fall Town Meeting. Our moderator commented on the Veterans Day Parade plans for this Thursday. There will be no town meeting on this Thursday. We started off with Article 10, which was to accept the report of the Capital Planning Committee. That's just a parliamentary procedure to accept that. And then we had 14 motions proposed by Capital Planning. I'm going to run through them very quickly. These were proposals for spending money out of the capital and building stabilization funds. $750,000 for the HVAC system at the fire station. $154,000 for the HVAC system at Town Hall. $24,000 to repair the facade of McCall Middle School, which was built in 1932. $185,000 for engineering and improvements to the West Side Fire Station. $134,000 for the DPW storage garage. $60,000 for the Lincoln School chiller design work. $50,000 for the Lincoln School site work design improvements, improvements design. $26,000 for the middle school pneumatic system design. $725,000 to replace a fire engine. $66,000 for a study of the Washington Street Bridge. $55,000 for the Cross Street Bridge Study and Engineering. $165,000 for a traffic plan, townwide traffic plan study. $350,000 for a fire department, new fire department ambulance, and $40,000 for replacement of a DPW manager's vehicle. All of those were passed. Got some discussion, especially the traffic plan study, but all were passed, and we have gone on to Article 13, which is a proposal for $72,000 for an engineering study for the repair and reconstruction of the South Reservoir Dam. And this follows a reconstruction of the North Reservoir Dam in the past few years. The presentation said that this must be repaired to continue to use the reservoir water system and that seepage is a great problem there. We saw a brief presentation of the number of trees that were going to have to be removed. Apparently, were planted there to stabilize it but are having the opposite effect. Additional funds for that after the study is done will be requested at Springtown Meeting. And we're just about to start on a proposal for $6.5 million worth of improvements to the transfer station. We are on a break right now, and we're going to pick that up as Article 14 when Town Meeting resumes in just a couple of minutes.
Welcome back, Town Meeting. We are starting with Article 14 on page 30 of your Town Meeting Blue Booklets. I do need to read in the entire motion for procedures, so I'm going to do that now for you. It is moved and seconded that 6,500,000 be appropriated to pay costs of the transfer station project consisting of A, remodeling, reconstructing, and making extraordinary repairs to the town's transfer station facility; B, remediating and preventing pollution caused by the closed incinerator located at the site of the town's transfer station, including the demolition and disposition of the incinerator; and C, acquiring equipment for the operation of the town's transfer station and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, I, the treasurer, with approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $5,500,000 under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 8, Subsection 20, and/or Section 8, Subsection 22, or under any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and to $1 million shall be funded from free cash that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20. Thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount that the town manager shall be authorized to have oversight of the transfer station project, and that in accordance with Section 4-2 of the Town of Winchester Home Rule Charter, the town manager shall have the authority to enter into contracts to approve payments with respect to the project. Proponents are the Select Board and Capital Planning Committee. On behalf of those two boards, we will have Mr. Michael Betancourt of the Select Board. That is being shared by our IT Director.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, Town Meeting, and thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 14 comes before Town Meeting to request authorization to borrow some of money for repairs and renovations to the transfer station facility. At present, the transfer station has significant operational, safety, and health deficiencies that require immediate attention. These long-deferred capital expenses are necessary for maintaining our current operations and providing residents with site-based trash services. Here's a general scope of the project. We will be making improvements to the tipping building and conveyor belt, upgrades to the electrical system, demolition and abatement of the incinerator building, remediation of pollution caused by the incinerator building, creation of dedicated employee office and restrooms, improvements to the recycling and food waste areas, improvements to general site layout for improved traffic circulation and increased efficiencies to meet future DEP requirements. License plate reader systems will also be installed to capture fraud and lost revenue. The incinerator building is contaminated, unsafe because of faulty electrical service as well as remaining incinerator ash and rodents. It is neither physically safe or healthy to enter the facility. Removal of the building is necessary to facilitate and modernize the system and create an efficient, safe service at the transfer station in the future. The conveyor belt does the heavy lifting for receiving and distributing our solid waste to our trucks and transfer our trash off-site. It is in constant need of repair and requires replacement to work effectively. Because the site was once a landfill and contaminated, the Department of Environmental Protection allowed the town to cap the soil and monitor hazardous emissions. The pavement is in need of repair as it protects the cap underneath, which is required to be intact for operation of the transfer station. Currently, the dog pound and staff facilities are housed in the same building and in disrepair. While repairs have been done on a regular basis, the facility is continuing to require repair and is not acceptable for its current use. The tipping building and compactor, which receives the solid waste from the conveyor belt, is in need of immediate repairs to protect the building from exposure to the elements and damage to aging equipment. This is a long overdue project that significantly impacts the operations of the transfer station. The building used to attach to the tipping building is necessary to continue to maintain the required electrical service for this facility after the removal of the incinerator building. This will allow the building to operate reliably and safely for this foreseeable future, as well as give the town options should we choose to upgrade the existing infrastructure in response to future policy or operational changes. Where the town saw revenue from our increased recycling efforts in past years, the market has shifted, leaving us with deficits and higher contract prices for removal. Specifically, cost to recycle rose 78% from FY '20 to FY '21. Average cost in the past year was $44. Where the SMART program successfully supported our objectives to increase recycling, the cost of solid waste and recycling removal increased exponentially, making it impossible to use the general permit fee to subsidize the SMART fee. The new design will have one area for solid waste, which improves efficiency of operations going forward with improvements. We can still review the SMART program at a later date upon completion of the improvements as we realize operational cost savings in the future. We will be eliminating the SMART program on January 1, 2022. Removing food waste from the waste stream will help us pursue one of the goals of our climate action plan by composting and reducing the cost of removal by reducing tonnage. Statewide data indicates that residents put 25% to 35% of food waste into the solid waste stream. This costs taxpayers money and increases our greenhouse gas emissions. We will be working with our contractor to encourage food waste separation, removal, and composting. One of the main objectives of the upgrades to the transfer station facility is the need for environmental remediation. There will be improvements to our stormwater system, removal of asbestos and hazardous building materials. We will be removing contaminated solid waste and ash from the incinerator building, as well as making landfill cap improvements with new asphalt. Completing the improvements will provide long-term solutions and mitigate site hazards to prevent contaminant migration. Here is an aerial view of the proposed transfer station design. You can see the removed incinerator building allows for increased access and safety to recycling, better traffic flow and circulation, a new food waste area and license plate reader system at the entrance. There's a new staff trailer and electrical room with improvements to the tipping building. Here is a summary of the estimated costs for the project. As you can see, the removal of the incinerator building is fairly expensive, as well as the contingency on the project. As we have seen, market conditions vary in recent years. We want to make sure that there is enough contingency to allow the project to continue as designed. The construction subtotal is $5,606,000. With the contingency and contract administration on top of that, we estimate the project as If Town Meeting approves the funding of construction, the plan is to finalize permitting in the fall and bid the project in the winter for spring '22 construction. Select Board voted the following options for funding. Elimination of the SMART program effective January 22. Expected to increase revenue by approximately $248,000. Effective January 1, 2023, establish a transfer station capital facility fee of $22 for all household holding permits. Effective January 1, 2024, increase facility fee by $58 for a total of $80. The fee is expected to raise $400,000 annually toward the estimated $570,000 in debt service for improvements. The Capital Planning Committee voted to use $170,000 per year from the stabilization funds in FY '24 to FY '32. The cost goes down significantly after 10 years. Thank you again for your support of this article. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Betancourt. Further on the question, do we have recommendations from boards and committees for Tom Meeting's consideration? Dr. Blackwell of FINCOM.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. FINCOM voted in favor of this Article 7 to 4. Those opposed wondered if other funding possibilities or revenue generation could have been used instead. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to double-check. Mr. Johnson, did you have a recommendation on capital? I believe you're the co-sponsor, so I would assume, but I don't want to either. Hello.
Hello, yes. The Capital Committee supported Transfer Station Warren Article, and we did co-sponsor it. We believe this is a necessary project to keeping the town moving forward in the disposal and recycling of our trash and recyclables. And I'd like to call the attention that it does remediate a long-term building issue in the old station. And if we had done this several years ago, I believe the remediation cost was about $500,000. The longer we wait, the more money it's going to cost us to move on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Tom Meeting members, if you turn your attention to your Speak button, we will now go through Tom Meeting members for questions and debate. Further on the question, Frida Nace of Precinct 8.
Hi, Madam Moderator. I think that might be a mistake. I had raised my hand for a question prior to the break.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much. Further on the question, Mr. Roger Wilson of Precinct 1.
Two questions. One, with regard to increased efficiencies, will these efficiencies reduce inputs, in particular labor inputs, and reduce the growth of the cost of the transfer station to taxpayers? That's question one. And question two, and as part of the discussion here, the idea of making this into a regional transfer to railroad had reared its ugly head again. And I want to know if the Select Board has made a policy position in this matter to say, "We're not going to have railroad siding and railroad access to the transfer station."
Thank you very much. For the first part of that question, I'm going to direct it to Mr. Gill, the head of the Department of Public Works. With this work done at the transfer station, can you give us more information if it will reduce the labor and/or the operating cost for that site?
Good evening, Madam Moderator.
Good evening.
To answer the question, Mr. Wilson, no, the labor costs will stay the same.
Does that also include the operating costs as well, Mr. Gill?
That's correct. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you very much. The second part question is going to be directed to Mr. Betancourt, a member of the Select Board. Is there a policy position regarding the railroad access to the site?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, through you to Mr. Wilson. There is no policy, per se. We are unable to set policies to bind future boards, but I will say, in my time on the board, I haven't seen a single I haven't seen a single vote in favor of the kind of operation you're suggesting. I think the work that we're intending to do here is to avoid that option from coming into play down the road. So, a lot of the deferred maintenance and infrastructure work that you see here is been put off for years just because we weren't sure what the market was going to do and what the state was going to offer. And we've just been kind of treading water for too long. So, there's no policy, I will say, but there is no motivation on the part of the Select Board to entertain a rail removal system or regionalization at this point. We do, as you know, Mr. Wilson, have, we use about 50% of our permit capacity at the transfer station. So, we can bring in quite a bit more trash to, from commercial trucks, from other communities that can be handled at our site and then moved off. So, there's a lot of revenue potential there, and I think that's part of what the Finance Committee was looking for us to do is to maybe incrementally over time add some more revenue pieces into our plan. So, we will be working with FinCom in the future. We'll be establishing a working group to evaluate some of these revenue options. And I know the labor question wasn't directed to me, but I do think that there is going to be a move to recycling to maybe separate at some point again. We're not quite there yet, but there's some additional revenue with cardboard and other recyclables that have been in single stream that, you know, may actually increase our labor. So, I think there are future efficiencies and there's future revenue. So, we will keep at this in the years to come. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Further on the question, Stephanie Zaromba of Precinct 2.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you, I think to the proponents of somewhat multi-part question, a number of members of my precinct, including myself, have loved the SMART recycling program and our understanding of why it's ending, but still sad to see it go. And there's been some discussion about composting. And so, one thing I'd love to understand better is whether the composting is cost efficient, you know, especially as compared to recycling, which has become increasingly not cost-effective. And so, I'm curious if that's true, that the preference would be for folks to compost more? And if so, if in the fee increases that were outlined, if usage-based fees were considered or might they be considered on recycling and/or solid waste to continue to encourage composting? And then, secondly, on the cost of recycling, I'm wondering if the Select Board has discussed or will discuss better outreach that can be done to residents to minimize inappropriate recycling? Because I think anyone who's actually looked at the list of what actually is and is not recyclable would be kind of surprised and feel badly that there were so many things they thought that were recyclable that are not. Thank you.
Thank you. To Mr. Betancourt of the Select Board. If you would like to redirect these, please let me know. Is the composting cost-effective and what is being looked at in terms of composting? The second part is outreach and what is the plan for outreach for recycling going forward?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to redirect this to Jay Gill, the Director of our Public Works, and I'm happy to answer the second part of the question as well, if he doesn't feel like it.
Thank you. Mr. Gill of the Department of Public Works, could you provide us information on the cost effectiveness of composting? And then, the other side of it is outreach for recycling?
Yeah, Madam Moderator. On food waste, composting, we'd be taking the food waste and taking it out of the solid waste numbers, and that would take that, that, taking the food waste and composting, it would be taking it out of the solid waste, which would be going up to Andover. So, there is a savings of that. And we are going to be adding a compost site for food waste building that's going to be on the compost site. So, we feel that food waste is really going to be taking over a new cycle in the area where we're going to spend a lot of time. We actually do food waste now. We have bins that you can, any resident can come in and when they do their recycle, there's an area for food waste. But in the next few months, we're going to be doing a huge program on food waste and trying to get more residents to take that out of the solid waste.
And then, can you also add, you have the outreach program that you have in place for the recycling?
We do have a, on the website from our JRM, which is our recycling company that we have, we do have everything that's listed, what's recyclable and what's not. I think it's Recycopedia.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gill, while I have you, can you please define where that composting area is in DDP at the transfer station? Because I'm sure a lot of town meeting members would like to know exactly where it is located for those. Use this moment as a time for public outreach. Where is the composting area in the transfer station is what I'm asking you, so they know.
So, when you come into the transfer station, it's on the left. That's where we do composting with all the leaves that become, actually loom. And actually, if you see the big pile, it's one of the favorite things we do for the residents. It's free, and everyone uses it for their garden. You know, they use it for loom in their grass seeds and seed in the lawns. And then, the building, the food waste building is going to be right next to the swap shop. It's going to be a building with a tent, which we're the, that's where we'll be doing the food waste.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Further on the question, Anthony Conti of Precinct 2.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I have two questions. One, I understand why recycling is no longer cost-effective since most of this material we now have to pay to have disposed. But I wonder, metals, I would think, would be cost-effective if we had separated them out from other materials that are now all thrown in together. Metals, I'm sure, would be cost-effective. I wonder why we haven't separated out metals, which can be sold and recover funds for the town? First question. The second question is, while construction and demolition are taking place, will the facility be fully functional? And could we have some little explanation of how residents will be affected by the work that seems like it's going to be major construction and demolition work? And what effect that will have on the functioning of the facility? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gill of the DPW, could you provide us some in-depth overview of how the transfer station is going to operate throughout construction?
Sure. There was two questions. There was one, and the other question was the metals. Is that correct?
Yes, there is.
Was that aluminum or just metal? I wasn't sure if it's both, but I'll answer both. So, I'll start with the construction. We're pretty confident that we'll keep the daily operations functional. It won't be like when we did the conveyor belt, where we had to take and put, you know, containers out in the middle of the roadway. We probably, when we do the tipping building, we may be only using one pit at a time, but we've been reassured by the consultant that, operational-wise, we'll be able to run the facility. Part of the reason why we had to take SMART away is due to the construction down below. I just want to make it perfectly clear, as the Director of Public Works, once this great project gets done, there's no reason why we couldn't do all SMART, all, you know, sticker, you know, solid waste. So, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that, that we only, you know, the SMART program was an eight-year pilot program. And at this time during operation, that was the only thing we had to kind of stock. But I just want to make it clear that, once we get done with this project, that the facility can handle any operation that we want. DDP came down and met with us about a week ago, and we're talking about how important it is to, you know, pick one or the other, you know? And I think that's something the Select Board can decide or the town after we get this facility taken care of. So, I'm sorry. So, part of the, you know, new units on the recycling units, we're going to add, I believe there's like eight units. So, we could separate the metals and cardboard. We are in negotiations with our recycling company as it is, and we're only halfway through the year with them. We're hoping to get some new numbers. Cardboard, there's one way we can make some revenue. It's going way up, and that's one of the things we're looking at now. But if you look at the picture of all the new recycling units, we can recycle and divert different products into these containers.
Thank you very much. Town meeting members, I'm going to remind you that we are unable to communicate with you if you raise your hand and there is a queue. So, please use your V voter request to speak. If you have any issues, please use a Q and A or use the phone numbers that are on your V voter to reach out to staff if there is an issue that is going on. Further on the question, Brian Vernalia of Precinct 4. And I just want to give town meeting members also, before you start, Mr. Vernalia, that there are five members, six members currently in line. Mr. Vernalia?
Thank you very much. I wanted to say at the outset that I support this motion and this article. I think this is work that we have to do as a town, so I support it. I do, however, have two questions. The first would be, why are we not borrowing the entire amount of $6.5 million, given the low borrowing costs? And the second would be, what will be the expected term of the debt that we would have? And potentially, Madam Moderator, I would like to have a follow-up, potentially if possible, to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. To Mr. Betancourt of the Select Board, could you please give us more information on why we are not borrowing the entire amount and also the term of the debt? If you'd like me to turn it over, please let me know who you would like me to direct it to.
I might, yeah. Thank you, Madam Moderator, through you to Mr. Vernalia. So, with this project, I won't, I may have to lean on someone for the specifics of the debt service, but what I will say is that the only part that we're able to push out for 30 years is the environmental remediation piece. So, there's shorter-term debt, which is more expensive for us on a yearly basis for the other pieces of the project. So, I think those are 15 years and then 30 on the remediation piece. So, they are, they're different, but it's what is required by the state. So, and I can get certainly more specifics on that for you. And what was the second piece of the question? I forgot, Madam Moderator.
Why are you not borrowing the entire amount or the term of the debt? Those are the two questions.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator. We might, I think that for this piece, we had quite a bit of reversions from last year and is a policy the Select Board to use our reversions for capital expenses. And we, you know, were a little surprised, frankly, at the cost of this project. We originally anticipated it in the $3 million range. So, we're trying not to overburn the stabilization funds and trying to use some of the reversions from last year, when we were running very, very lean departmentally.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vernalia, did you have a follow-up?
I did, thank you, Madam Moderator. I don't know if it would be in order, but I would like to make a motion to amend this motion to borrow the entire amount of $6.5 million. I don't know if that would be in order, but I'd like to make such a motion.
Give us one moment while we confer with staff.
Thank you.
Sorry for the delay, town meeting. We're just having staff check on everything before I make a decision. So, thank you for your patience, town meeting members. We are just, for those who do not know, our town manager and our assistant town manager and a bunch of our, the financial team behind town government is inside Town Hall. And so, we're just conferring with them and getting a couple of my questions answered to before I make my determination. Mr. Vernalia, I do find your motion to amend to be in order. Do we have a second? There is a second on the floor from our deputy moderator at this time. So, for town meeting members, I'm just going to help clarify what Mr. Vernalia just did. So, in the motion, we had $5,500,000. That was to be borrowed, and $1 million would be coming from free cash. He essentially has requested that all $6.5 million come under bonding and on a borrowing. And so, we will need to adjust the language that is in the amendment. But at this point, we are going to debate making that amendment to Article 14. At this time, I am going to actually have the queue cleaned out because there is a bunch of seconds that are backed up into it and give you a moment before you, town meeting members, start hitting your speak on the motion buttons. To the Select Board, I would like to ask if you accept it as a friendly amendment to yours or if you would like it to be debated?
Madam Moderator, I have not been able to poll my board or have any kind of discussion about that. And I suspect we would like to debate it.
Okay, thank you. As this is on the fly, I just also want to give boards and committees opportunities to to give the recommendation, as I know FinCom has not met on it. I do want to give an opportunity even so to Dr. Blackwell, the Chair of FinCom, if you so would like to take it to speak on this.
Sure, thank you, Madam Moderator. This issue did come up at our FinCom meeting and the question was raised, why the full amount wasn't bonded? So I know there are supporters of moving in this direction on the Finance Committee, but I do not have a total if the full Finance Committee would support it. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that information, Dr. Blackwell. To members of town meeting, you may now use your speak on the motion button if you would like to have any questions or debate. And this is on the motion to amend Article 14. And we will be getting the language up shortly for you. All the technical language will be up for you shortly.
So Madam Moderator, again, doing this on the fly, I would like to request that the Select Board be able to have a caucus step out and meet in order to discuss this and develop our position and our recommendation on the amendment.
You can actually do that now because as we, right now, we're trying to get the language up on the screen so everyone can see exactly what is being debated and discussed. So go ahead.
Thank you.
Yep. As part of that as well, Mr. Johnson of Capital Planning, I believe that you also would need to discuss with yours as well as the co-sponsor. All right, our town council is quickly going to describe the motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just to quickly go through what is happening to the motion. Under Roman numeral one in your motion book, the number 5.5 million, 500, 5,500,000 would change to 6,500,000. And then following the Roman numeral two, the clause that reads, "One million shall be," excuse me, and Roman numeral two, "one million shall be funded from free cash" would be deleted. The rest of the motion would stay the same, except that the numbering would no longer be necessary. Everything after the semicolon, after the words "free cash" would stay there because that's related to the borrowing.
On behalf of Capital Planning, the Chair, Mr. Jimmy Johnson.
Good evening, once again. On behalf of the Capital Planning Committee, we are not in a position to support this motion. The original proposal was to put $1 million from free cash into a non-reoccurring service expense because we do have it in free cash. Capital Committee did support a plan that would allocate some funding from capital and the majority of the funding would come from a fee structure charged through the permit process to the residents and commercial and possibly commercial accounts in the town of Winchester. Thank you. We don't have the funds in the stabilization account to pay for this project.
Thank you. Ms. Verdickio, are you ready to give your recommendation from the Select Board? Moving on to town meeting members, further on the question, Mr. Dejavgerius of Precinct Eight.
Thank you, Mrs., excuse me, thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to ask through you two of FinCom that while they may not have come to a decision as to whether they might support this, could she, the Chair, perhaps elucidate on the arguments for or against this measure that was brought up in their discussion?
Thank you. To Dr. Blackwell, could you provide your insight on why someone would or would not support Article 14 as a proposed amended?
So I would just be sharing my own personal opinion. We did not discuss specifics at the Finance Committee meeting. I have polled various members, but no, we would not, we have not discussed it. So it's, if we borrowed more, it could be more favorable for the town because you're drawing less upon free cash. So that's one viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Chris Nixon of Precinct One.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So just to, as a member of Capital there with Mr. Johnson, I just wanted to put maybe a finer point on his remarks and make the observation that I think Mr. Vinalia's motion, while it may be in order, it begs a question, which is if we were not to take the $1 million out of free cash and borrow the full amount, that's clearly understood. The question that is left hanging is, from where does the money come for that debt service? So I think the point Mr. Johnson's trying to make is, if, if there's an expectation on the part of Mr. Vinalia, though he did not say so, but perhaps on the part of the Select Board, that the debt service on that extra $1 million would be paid for out of the capital stabilization fund, that's an issue because we don't have the monies for that. That would just have a huge structural impact on what capital is able to accomplish. So I suppose a question that I might pose really to the Select Board through you to the Chair would be, if the Board were to entertain Mr. Vinalia's motion, what disposition does the Select Board have as to where the money would come from to pay that regular debt service on what amounts to an additional 20%? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Susan Verdickio, are you back?
And Madam Moderator, if I could just add, I think that's, that's important for me to understand about how I could really vote on this amendment. It's, I understand the motion is to just borrow the full amount. I think, I think we really need to understand where the money is to come from to take, to take on that additional debt service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Betancourt? Dr. Miller of Precinct Six, what is your motion?
My motion is to table this, to give the Select Board and FinCom an opportunity to analyze it. We can take it up at the end of the, end of the meeting.
Madam Moderator, the Select Board is back and we're ready to go.
Well, there's a motion to table on the floor.
Is there a second? The second on the motion is from Tony Conti of Precinct Two. It is debatable. We're going to clear the screen.
Madam Moderator, I'm not sure where we are. We just got back from our caucus.
There's, there's a motion to postpone discussion.
The motion was to table it, to give FinCom and the Select Board a chance to review this.
Thank you, Dr. Miller.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it is to postpone the discussion for a certain time. And so at that point, it was, it's been seconded and now we're going into the debate of tabling it. We can put a time limit on that. And so I'm going to give town meeting a maximum of 10 minutes to decide if we want to table it. Town meeting members, if you have, and it's, it would be tabling it to the end of this meeting. It would be the last item on the agenda. If you would like to speak, use your speak button. Seeing no one rise, we are going to take a motion to table the motion to amend Article 14, which also includes Article 14, to be moved to the end of our agenda for town meeting. Give us one moment while we get V voter up on your screen. Town meeting members, this will require a majority vote. You turn your attention to V voter. It will be coming up and this is a motion to postpone the motion to amend Article 14, which will cause, if you vote, two points of order. Pamela Court of Precinct Five.
Hi, Madam Moderator. My apologies. It seems like you might have been just about to answer my question. I'd like to just understand what the consequence is of voting yes or no on tabling this motion to amend until time certain at the end of business for this town meeting. Does that mean that the entire article then needs to be postponed until time certain, since we won't be deciding on an amendment on it? Thank you.
That is correct. So all of Article 14 would just be taken out of order and placed at the end of our agenda of our business for this meeting. So not for tonight, but overall in the entire meeting. So once we get through all of our articles, all the way past, I believe 31 is our last one, we would then take Article 14 back up. That is, if this were to pass. If this were to fail, we would continue debating the motion to amend Article 14 and continue in our procedures that way. There is another point of order from Chris Nixon of Precinct One.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I, my sense is that the question I had through you to the Select Board may have come while they were still in caucus. So if this motion to table should be successful, I just wanted to be sure that the Select Board understands there's a question out there as to the disposition of that additional long-term debt. So in other words, if we're not using the $1 million from free cash and we borrow the full amount, what is the Select Board's understanding or intention with respect to where that debt service is going to come from? Is it the Select Board's understanding that it would come, for instance, from the capital stabilization fund, which would then have a material impact on what capital is able to recommend? That was Mr. Johnson's point. So it would be helpful for town meeting to understand beyond fully borrowing for the project, where is the money coming from to pay for that additional debt service long-term? I think that's really an essential piece of information to understand for town meeting to decide how they wish to vote on the amendment proposed by Mr. Vinalia. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will find that actually in order. My apologies to the Select Board. I was trying to get your attention, but you were in your caucus. So there, there was a question that came up that they would like to have a better understanding, town meeting members would like to have a better understanding of where the money for the $1 million additional bonding would be coming from. And if you have insight into that, and I may, you may actually be able to provide your recommendation as well in providing that answer.
Well, Mike might have more specific information, but my understanding is, you know, this is not excluded debt, you know, that we're looking at. So it would have to come out of our operating budget or from the, from users, from the, you know, annual fee.
Thank you very much. We will return to, now to your V voter. Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon, for pointing out that we left that table, that question on the table due to communication through Zoom issues. Looking at V voter, we are now voting on Article 14's motion to amend, to table that until time certain, which is at the end of this meeting, of fall town meeting. Requires a majority vote. And it is currently on your V voter screen. Yes, if you would like to postpone, no, if you would not like to, and continue with the debate. There are 91 in affirmative, 45 in the negative. The affirmative has it and the motion is passed. Moving onward. So Article 14 is now being relocated after Article, I believe, 31. Articles 15 through 18 was in our consent, consent agenda, so we are now moving to Article 19. Articles 15 through 18 was in our consent, consent agenda. So we are now moving to Article 19. All right, town meeting members, we are going to take up Article 19, and then at that point, pending there are no curveballs, we will end this evening's meeting after that. So Article 19 is move on page 37 of your blue book. It is moved and seconded at the town vote to appropriate $315,000 from free cash for the purposes of contributing the town share of improvements to the Winchester Center commuter rail station. On behalf of the proponent, Select Board member Rich Mucci.
Good evening. I am Rich Mucci from the Select Board, and I am here to present Article 19. A Select Board sponsored article requesting $315,000 from free cash to cover the actual construction costs of the Winchester's cost-sharing items for the MBTA Winchester Center Station construction project. The town has been working with the MBTA since 2010 on plans for reconstruction of the Winchester Center commuter rail station. Fall 2020 town meeting appropriated $240,000 to fund several items that were not in the MBTA's original scope, but were identified as important to integrate the station into the historic town center. The MBTA bid the project in summer 2021, and bids came back over budget, including Winchester's cost-sharing items. Qualified bidder's cost has come in approximately $7 million higher than the original estimates. This included the scope of work important and funded by Winchester. As a reminder, this is what the station will look like when complete. These cost-sharing items include installing granite cladding on new piers in the Quill Rotary and add a bridge above it on Waterfield Road. Installing salvaged stone veneer to match existing stone on Laroie Road. Repaint pedestrian tunnel between the Waterfield and Aberjon lots, installing irrigation along the viaduct at Laroie Road. This article asks town meeting for $315,000 from free cash to cover the actual construction costs for these items for the bid results. The project will be awarded this fall with work starting thereafter. The actual overall cost of the project is now $61 million. And if you include this ask, Winchester will contribute less than 1% towards these project costs. I hope you will join the Select Board in voting yes on Article 19. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rich, Mr. Mucci. Further on the question, on behalf of the boards and committees, Dr. Blackwell of FinCom.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom did vote favorable action, but it was close. It was a vote of six in favor and five against, and the minority felt that the granite was too expensive, that the funds could be better spent, but the majority saw it as the best, in the best interest of the town, the beautification efforts, and to further increase property values. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Mr. Gerius from the Planning Board.
The Planning Board took no vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Mr. Lamenta J from Historical Commission.
Excuse me. The Historical Commission took no vote on this, but the commission has, from the very beginning of this project, more than 10 years ago, expressed the desire to retain the granite cladding that exists there now. The original plan was to reclaim it and then put it back, which sounds like that's what's happening. So I would venture to guess that the Historical Commission continues to be in support of this.
Thank you very much. Town meeting members, if you use your speak on the motion button, we will continue questions and debate on Article 19 regarding using free cash for the Winchester Center commuter rail station restoration. Further on the question, Mr. Tony Conti of Precinct 2.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you, the town meeting, we have to have priorities. You know, preserving the granite cladding frankly is not worth $315,000. That's a lot of money that could be better spent on many other things than, than granite cladding. I really can't justify any of that kind of money, given the town's financial situation. We need to preserve our free cash, especially if, if the previous motion that we postponed is taken up. It's going to be a very expensive proposition, and I ask that town meeting vote against this proposal.
Thank you. Further on the question, Yanis Evergenis of Precinct 6.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. At the risk of arguing against granite, I wanted to urge town meeting members to consider all of the items that we've had to consider funding or not funding in the last year and a half. And I would also urge town meeting members who were present in the spring meeting to recall Mr. Racionado's then Chair of FinCom presentation about the various overrides that we're staring down. The current cost of the project, as stated in the motion, is over $500,000. That's a good chunk of the fire engine that we just approved a moment ago. And if I had to guess, I would consider it likely that by the time we're done with this, it will rise even further. So I would urge that we vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Thomas Hawley of Precinct 3.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I wonder if I might pose a question maybe to Mr. Mucci or whoever else might be able to answer it. As, if it is not granite clad, and what, what will it be? The center train station is something, and the rotary is something that I think many of us see frequently throughout the week and perhaps even throughout the day. And this is a improvement that presumably will have a duration of hopefully decades. So I'm just wondering, certainly spending the 350, if it's not necessary, that's one thing. But I'm wondering what will be in its place and what will we see?
Thank you very much. I'm going to direct that question to Ms. Rudolph, who is not only our acting town manager, but also the town engineer who has been working on this project for decades. So Ms. Rudolph, could you provide information on if the granite cladding is not funded, what will be put in its place?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. You're correct. So we've been working, there's been a working group that's worked collaboratively with the MBTA for the past 10 years on this project. The town had a long list of asks, and these were the few, four items that we prioritized back at the, at town meeting in 2020 for funding. If this, if the work is not funded, the, this, the stone along Laroie Road will be replaced with a precast concrete panel in that area. So the view from the town common will be a precast concrete panel.
Thank you. Further on the question, Samantha Allison of Precinct 3.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you, I think maybe to the town engineer, acting town manager. I'm just curious and forgive my ignorance, how much control do we actually have around this? I realize that this is just paying our share of a much larger project. And so I'm wondering, if this was voted down, what, where does that leave the, the town manager to then go back to the MBTA with the concerns? Thanks.
Acting town manager, Ms. Rudolph, could you provide information about the amount of control we have over this at this time, along with, where does that leave us?
Thank you. So we have, as, as we previously, were before town meeting in 2020, we had identified these four items as cost-sharing items with the MBTA, and they specifically included those items in their bid. That was the extent of the town's ability, sort of in terms of control. Those items, as was shown in the presentation, came back higher than the engineer's estimate. And so now we are back to town meeting requesting additional funds based on that actual construction cost. We do have the $240,000 that was previously appropriated. So if, if this motion fails this evening, when we don't get the additional $315,000, we'll have to go back to the table with the MBTA and determine what we can pay for with that $240,000 that we already have. The biggest issue is the, the salvage stone piece along Laroie, Laroie Road is the item that came in the highest cost, so that the MBTA cost for that item was $421,000. So we would not be able to use the existing money that we have to install the salvage stone, so that we would be looking at the other items that we have available in our cost-sharing agreement with the T, but we would not be able to pay for that salvage stone work with the existing $240,000 appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Rudolph, can you clarify where Laroie Road is for town meeting members?
Sure. Yeah, it's the, it's the driveway road parking area between the town common and the viaduct.
Thank you. Further on the question, Senator Jason Lewis, I saw your hand raised. Did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. This is Jason Lewis. I'm in Precinct 3, town meeting member. I also have the privilege of serving as Winchester State Senator. I want to urge town meeting not to be penny wise and pound foolish here. This has been, as, as Beth Rudolph said, you know, a very long process that we have been through, began, beginning in 2010. We've had a working group of representatives from various town boards and committees who've worked closely with the MBTA for many, many years. There've been numerous, you know, twists and turns and ups and downs, and times when this project, it was not clear that the project would move forward. This is, of course, very, very important to the Winchester downtown, to our local economy, and to our transportation network. The original estimated cost of the project was, was about 12 to 15 million dollars. And it is now, as you just heard from Select Board member Mucci, over $60 million. And that's because of the complexity of this project, and the cost of construction, and various decisions that had to be made over the years. The MBTA is not coming back to us now and saying that because of cost escalations in this project, that they're not going to move forward. They have committed to the project, and they're going to move forward with it. And it would be in very poor faith, in my opinion, if we weren't to follow through on our commitment here as well, because Winchester for many years has told the MBTA that these are very important to the town, that we make these additional improvements to the station. We've made that case for many years. We've gone back and forth with the MBTA over how to pay for them. We did reach an agreement that the town would contribute a modest amount toward the cost of this project in order for these specific improvements to be included in the new station. It's nobody's fault that the latest cost estimates are a little bit higher than they were last time this came before town meeting. And I think the right thing here for us to do for the town is to approve this, this warrant article and to contribute this, this funding toward this project, which again is a very small part of the total cost that the MBTA and state taxpayers will, will be funding on behalf of this community. So I would urge town meeting members to please vote in support of this article. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. There's a move the vote from Michael Russo of Precinct 4. Is there a second? Second from Stephen Bozansky of Precinct 4. You won the lottery today on the second to vote. Moving to your V voter. We are voting to close debate. That is what we are deciding if you would like to close debate on Article 19. Have you turned your attention to V voter? There are. No, there's two left. There are two members of town meeting who have not spoken last yet. If you turn your attention to V voter, there is a motion to terminate the debate. It requires two-thirds vote. 131 town meeting members voting with 88 required for adoption. There are 101 in affirmative, 30 in the negative, the two-thirds in affirmative, and the motion is adopted. We are terminating the debate for Article 19, and now we will move directly to vote Article 19. Give us one moment while we flip the voter and get it ready for you. A majority vote of members present is required. The question is on your V voter screen at this time, and is also on page 37 of your blue booklet. Please turn your attention to V voter and mark yes if you are in favor of Article 19 and no if you are not. Thank you. There are 125 in affirmative, 19 in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. Article 19 has passed. Thank you so much, town meeting. As promised, we would get through Article 19, and then we would break for our next session. As discussed at the beginning of the meeting, our next meeting will not be this upcoming Thursday, but the following Monday, I believe that is the 15th, at 7 o'clock. We will be starting with Article 25 when we return. And and also the town clerk will send out a notice. Do we have a motion to adjourn? I will. There's a second by Colin White. All those in favor? Thank you so much to our town meeting members, to all of our staff, and all those behind us that make all this happen for our town government.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, you have just seen the third session of Winchester's Fall Town Meeting adjourned here, actually a little earlier tonight, given our, what we've been doing up till now, up till after 11:30 or 11:45 on the up till after eleven-thirty or eleven-forty-five on the previous Monday night. So let's recap what's happened tonight. We started with Article ten, which was receiving, and the capital planning report. That's just an administrative article that was passed. Most of the debate tonight and questions were on the fourteen motions put forth by the Capital Planning Committee. And those were seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for improvements, a new HVAC, HVAC system at the fire station, one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for new HVAC systems at the Town Hall, twenty-four thousand dollars for the repairing the facade of the McCall Middle School, which was built in nineteen thirty-two, one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for engineering and improvements to the West Side Fire Station, one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for a DPW storage garage, sixty thousand dollars for design of the Lincoln School chiller, fifty thousand dollars for design work on the Lincoln School site, twenty-six thousand dollars for the McCall Middle School pneumatic system design, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for replacing a fire engine, sixty-six thousand dollars for a study of the Washington Street Bridge over the Aberjonah, fifty-five thousand dollars for engineering studies on the Cross Street Bridge over the Aberjonah, one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a traffic, townwide traffic plan study, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the fire department ambulance, and forty thousand dollars for a DPW manager's vehicle. All of those were passed, all part of Article, Article twelve. Article thirteen was a proposal for seven, seventy-two thousand dollars for an engineering study for the repair and reconstruction of the South Reservoir Dam in the Fells. We heard that it must be repaired to continue to use that water system of the Fells reservoirs that the town owns. Seepage is a problem, and additional funds based on this study will be requested at Spring Town Meeting. Article fourteen was a proposal for six-point-five-million-dollar reconstruction of the transfer station. We saw a presentation from Select Board Member Michael Betancourt. This proposal will include demolish the incinerator building, repave the areas, which are a landfill that needed to be kept capped, replace the transfer belt and new facilities for the employees, and reconfigure the entire site. There was a motion to amend that, that the town should borrow all six-point-five-million dollars. The initial article was five-point-five million borrowed and one-point-one million dollars coming from free cash. So the motion to amend it to borrow, borrow all six-point-five-million dollars failed. But further consideration, the article was postponed until the last item of business next Monday. Article nineteen was the last article discussed tonight, was three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for supplemental improvements to the train station that will not be paid for by the MBTA. Most of this is for stone cladding over the piers and face of the train station on Lareway Road and at the Quill Rotary. We heard from several parties, including our State Senator Jason Lewis, who said that these, this cost was in addition to about two hundred and fifty thousand that the town had already appropriated. But the price of just about everything, including building this train station, has gone up. And then he reminded the town that this train station reconstruction originally proposed ten years ago was about twelve to fifteen million dollars. It is now sixty-one million dollars, based on the bids that received by the MBTA. And he reminded the, the Town Meeting that this was less than one percent of the entire project. And also, this is, these are improvements that are going to be looked at by the town, will be seen by the town for probably the next fifty or sixty years. And that did pass. So that was Article nineteen. That is the last article passed tonight. Town Meeting will resume next Monday with consideration of Articles twenty-five through thirty-one. And hopefully wrap up the session and also reconsider, come back to Article fourteen and the, the funding for the transfer station improvements. So getting over pretty early tonight, ten fifteen. We will be back with more coverage of, hopefully, the final session of Spring Town Meeting, of Spring Town, Fall twenty-twenty-one Town Meeting here next Monday. And we wish you a happy Veterans Day, and thank you to all our veterans. For all of us here, Wind Cam, have a great night.